Perhaps we'll just pause until somebody confirms that it's working. Okay, that's been resolved. So we'll just start again actually with the Cabinet member. So just to confirm, Colin Kemp has given his apologies. And then Mary, if you could just reintroduce yourself in your role. Mary Lewis.
Certainly. Good afternoon, everyone. My name's Mary Lewis. I'm a Cabinet Member for Children, Young People and Families Wellbeing. Thank you.
Julie Isles.
Good afternoon. I'm councillor Julie Isles and I'm the Lead Member for Culture, well, the Schools and Education piece, All Age Learning.
And can we just record here? Congratulations to you in relation to the appointment in the recent honours of an OBE. So very well done. Sinead Mooney.
Thank you, Leader. I'm the Lead Member for Adult Social Care and Public Health.
Thank you, Sinead. Denise Turner-Stewart.
Good afternoon. I'm Denise Turner-Stewart. I'm Cabinet Member for Communities.
Thank you, Denise. Matt Furness.
Good afternoon. I'm Matt Furness. I'm Cabinet Member for Transport.
Thank you. Mal Fue.
Good afternoon. I'm Cabinet Member for Resources.
Thank you. Natalie Brownhall.
Good afternoon. My name's Natalie Brownhall and I'm the Cabinet Member for Environment and Climate Change.
Thank you very much. Zully Grant-Duff.
Good afternoon. I'm Zully Grant-Duff. I'm the Cabinet Member for Corporate Support.
Thank you very much. Mark Nutty.
Thank you. I'd also like to give my congratulations to councillor Isles for her recent award. I'm Mark Nutty, the Cabinet Member, Deputy Cabinet Member to the Leader.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Mark. Alison Griffiths.
Good afternoon. I'm councillor Alison Griffiths. I'm currently the Deputy Cabinet Member for Place.
Thank you, Alison. Marissa Heath.
Hi, everyone. I'm Marissa Heath. I'm the Deputy Cabinet Member for the People's Team. Thank you.
Thank you. Becky Rush.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Becky Rush. I'm the Deputy Cabinet Member for Finance.
Thank you. And then lastly, Edward Hawkins.
I think he's having troubles with his microphone according to the note.
Ah, yes. Okay, I can see that he's on the call, so hopefully that'll get resolved. Okay, thank you all very much. We'll move on to item two, minutes of the previous meeting, however, the 29th of September 2020. Unless I see any hands up, I assume those who are agreed without any amendment. Thank you very much. Are there any declarations of interest? No. Okay, thank you. The next item then is Members' Questions, but before I move on to those, I'd just like to make a few opening comments. Starting, I'm afraid, with COVID-19. I'm sure many residents across the county would have seen that Elmbridge recently was put into the high category, tier-two category, some people know it, which obviously then creates further restrictions on what individuals can do. I would ask all residents within the borough of Elmbridge, please, to familiarise themselves with those restrictions and wherever possible, comply with them. It's hugely important that all of us continue to take this dreadful virus seriously and indeed that we abide by just the basic rules of washing your hands, wearing face coverings where appropriate and keeping your distance, social distance, wherever possible. It has to be said, the numbers are rising across the county, although I don't believe that any of the other boroughs or districts at the moment are likely to be put into the high category. If residents don't continue to do what they are doing, which is abide by those rules, then I'm afraid that will be inevitable and something that I hope or I wish, that we all wish, can be avoided. And there is some uncertainty in terms of what actually, there are various tests that Public Health England, Regional Public Health England team carry out before they determine whether any organisation should move into the different categories, including the number of cases per hundred thousand and also the positivity and so on. I would just say at this point though, because there's been some public concern about it, that although there are some students that have given their home address for the purpose of the test, even though they're not residents in the borough, that hasn't distorted the figures to any real degree. So there is no real explanation as to why Elmbridge has got a higher number of cases, but it has and it's spread across the borough. There's no particular group or area that is the cause of that rise. So just to ask, please, that all residents continue to take this seriously. Secondly, I'll deal with it in a bit more detail, but I just, one of the papers, Agenda Item Nine, is to do with the organisational reset, which doesn't always necessarily mean much to residents. But what it is, is we have reviewed our 2030 strategy, which was a strategy and a vision for the future that was compiled with extensive engagement across the county, both from residents and from our partner organisations. And that vision was and is that no one is left behind and that we address inequalities, inequalities of life expectancy, health inequalities and inequality of opportunity. COVID-19 has brought that absolutely to the fore and I'm very proud of what this county, this organisation has been able to do to help our residents, particularly our vulnerable residents through what has been and continues to be a very challenging period. We now believe that there are four key priority areas that we must focus on. I will expand on those a little bit in due course, but just to highlight those four areas because they're key to everything that this authority will be doing and focusing on. And the first of that is to grow a sustainable economy so everyone can benefit. It's absolutely key now that we make sure that the economy in Surrey is as strong as it can be so that those people that want to work can work and that those businesses, our businesses can survive and indeed thrive wherever possible. The second one is to tackle health inequality and there are a number of items on the agenda today, including mental health, adult social care, home-based care services, extra care facilities that we're creating. You know, health inequality is a key issue for this county as much as for any other part of the country and we need to absolutely focus on that, not just in relation to the consequences of COVID-19. The third area is to enable a greener future. And again, there are items here that touch on that in some form, flood alleviation schemes, the waste plan and so on. You know, there are a number of initiatives that we have set in train to address the climate agenda and to whatever we can to get this county to be carbon neutral by 2050. And then lastly, the fourth one, but probably the most important, is empowering communities. There may be much more said about that to the next cabinet meeting, but it is about engaging with our communities at a real locality level and providing wherever we can and supporting the provision of real local facilities that people want to use. And we have an example of that again today on item 10 in relation to the Library and the Family Centre in Caterham Hill, which we'll talk about in a bit more detail in due course. The overarching point of the vision is that no one is left behind. I don't think anybody can be in any doubt at all that the significant impact COVID has had, not both physically and mentally. There has been a significant rise in mental health issues over the last few years, both for adults and for children. And that, I'm afraid, with periods of social isolation is just exacerbating that problem for and condition. There is a report that you'll hear about shortly, that a working group looked at mental health issues. But again, this is something that local government in all of its forms has to be one partner of. This isn't something that we can unilaterally resolve. It is hugely important that we work with the health system, with community safety teams and others that can really help people that need that support. To that extent, we have set up for next month a mental health summit and that is intended and will bring together all of the key partners and stakeholders across the system, across the county, to sit down and look at this issue and find ways in which we can really take some positive action to help those people that need us. And Sinead Mooney, I think, will again give us a bit more detail later in the meeting. I don't think I can ignore, should ignore at all the issue of free school meals. This authority, along with, again, our partners, have been supporting families throughout COVID, pre-COVID and will continue to do so. The government have said that they have given £63 million to local authorities to support those families. That is right. And the Surrey element of that was about £780,000 that was received in the summer. And that money has all been distributed to the Surrey Crisis Fund, the Book and Food Distribution Centre and then over half a million or so has been distributed to the district and boroughs and they themselves have then passed that on to food banks or other local charities. So it is right to say that there was no specific funding for free school meals. However, I'm very pleased that we've been able to step in with partners and we will be providing that support to families during the half term. But more importantly, as importantly, we will be putting in some arrangements for the longer term. And Julie Isles will pick up on that in due course to explain in a little bit more detail. Just two other things. Your Fund Surrey will go live next week and that is the fund that we have set aside with your money but for your use and for your benefit. So we are absolutely wanting to see really good projects that will make a real difference to your community. This is a capital fund and the process for applying for it is, I think, pretty straightforward. But please do look out for the details of that as it gets launched in the next week or so. And then my final comment is in relation to County Hall. I did announce nearly two years ago now that we would leave County Hall by the end of 2020 and that is the case. The County Council at its last meeting agreed that the civic aspects of the county's work that are currently based in County Hall here in Kingston will move to Woodhatch in Rye Gate and Rye Gate, that building, will be one of four main bases across the county, the others being in Walton-on-Thames, Leatherhead, Woking. We have many other operational buildings from which staff may also be based, but there will be no members of staff doing operational work for this authority outside of the county with effect from the end of this year. The site is being actively marketed and I'm sure in the not-too-distant future, we will be able to confirm that it has been disposal. That is just some opening remarks. We'll pick up on a number of those themes as we go through the agenda. We do have a lengthy agenda, but we'll try and move forward as sensibly or as quickly as we can. So the next item is item four and that is Members' Questions. There are four questions that were submitted. The question has the right to ask a supplementary, having seen a written response, and the first one was from Kay Hammond. Kay, do you have a supplementary question?
Thank you very much indeed. I really do want to thank the Cabinet Member for a very thorough response. However, I do have a small supplementary, which is, right at the end of the question, it was stated that Surrey has 23% of children with an educational healthcare plan as opposed to the national average of 16%. This seems a lot more than perhaps we should have and whether this is an indication that our preventative agenda is not actually in place yet, which is where we're wanting to be to support children earlier when problems arise. Could the Cabinet Member comment, please?
I'm happy to come in on that, Leader. And first of all, I'd like to thank councillor Hammond for the questions on this particular subject because, as people will know from the Ofsted Statement of Action in 2016 and the subsequent monitoring visit, we had one item that we'd still had to make sufficient progress on and that was about our special education needs pupils missing out on their education provision. So the fact that we've been able to answer these questions here speaks to that focus on improving that monitoring and the provision. And on the supplementary question, I do very much appreciate that we are an outlier on the national comparatives for these education healthcare plans. I've had some statistics around this, which show that Surrey has experienced a significant increase in the number of children and young people with complex special needs in the last four years or so. So the percentage increase in that healthcare plan growth, although it's dropped in recent years, it's still higher when compared to that national picture, to the statistical neighbours and also the South East Benchmarking Group. On average, Surrey's growth rate has been 12% since 2016 and that's nearly 2 percentage points higher. So I think we should welcome the steps that we're taking in our special needs transformation programmes. And if we look back at the figures from September's Cabinet Paper where we approved the use of capital funding, that's against projects that will provide additional specialist places in our own maintained settings where we can be confident of the outcomes. It also speaks to the Surrey 2030 vision where no one's left behind and we want our children educated closer to home and indeed more connected to their own communities. And I would also look very much towards the early help offers which are beginning to make that change that we want to see, Kay. The Local Learning Fund gives targeted early years help. It's very easy to access for our local care settings and our schools and our SENCA's in those schools. We've rolled out the graduated response and the early intervention so that we can get those things in place before the needs escalate to a point where a healthcare plan is needed. And it's very much about partnership, working with the schools and with our governing bodies to provide that special needs support in the mainstream settings. And our partners are taking responsibility for Surrey's children along with us as the local authority so that we have got that signposting and the immediate ability to triage when people contact us through the local learning spiral. So I am going on to speak about that in a bit more detail in another item, but I think that's a very exciting development for a one-stop approach to where people need to go to get the special needs help that is required.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kay. Thank you, Julie. The next three questions actually are from Jonathan Essex. The first to Natalie Brownhall. Jonathan, do you have a supplementary?
Thank you, Leader, and thank you, Natalie, for your response. I do have a supplementary from your response. You note that environmental sustainability assessments will be considered for items with certain criteria. But on the other hand, equality and diversity is now considered pretty much across the board for items that come from either decisions or strategies. You note in your reply that it's good to embed this across our decision-making processes. Well, within that in mind, looking at this agenda today, there is no environmental sustainability assessment on the flood alleviation on Caterham on the Hill or our winter resilience plan or our street lighting assessment or indeed on the development of an economic strategy or the refresh of our organisation strategy. Is it possible that in future this might be a standard item on all main cabinet agendas? And rather than having to meet a criteria to be included, it would generally be included except for, you know, particular reasons why it should be taken out. Because I can't see that if we have this sort of some has and some don't have approach, which appears evident from the current Cabinet Papers today, that we really will mainstream this to all the different parts of Surrey County Council's operations.
Thank you, Jonathan, for your supplementary. And I do actually totally get where you're coming from. I think really when we go through the organisational strategy refresh, then that will help us align with our community vision and that will ensure that our approach across climate change will be considered for our strategic and investment decisions. I mean, really with regard to the Caterham on the Hill flooding scheme, that really is purely a climate change strategy that we're going, you know, that we are putting in place to stop the flooding in that area. So, but I can understand what you're saying. And if you want a further response, happy to take this offline or catch up with you with offices.
Thank you. That's really helpful and I welcome that approach. I mean, I agree with you on Caterham on the Hill. It looks like a case where it's implicitly included, but I think to actually state what the issues are in all papers would give confidence that it is being considered across the board.
Okay, Jonathan, your next question. Any supplementary there?
Thank you, Leader, and thank you for your response. I note about, I think it's the third paragraph. You talk about, you know, the environmental impact assessment process covering factors such as deprivation and low incomes or child poverty, but looking at the current equality impact assessment process for the items on this cabinet agenda, it doesn't seem to go beyond the current characteristics which are defined by government as being equality impacts that need to be assessed. So in doing this, what you've said and, you know, really leaving no one behind in terms of health and economics, does that mean that you're planning to, you know, upgrade, if you like, the equality impact assessment forms going forwards? And, you know, do something special or different in terms of the economic and the health aspects?
I think the end of that third paragraph does confirm that we are looking at the process to consider how we might test those impacts on, you know, including on health and economic inequalities. Certainly, the community impact assessment work that we have done, which has come to this cabinet and to the Health and Wellbeing Board in recent past, has really raised a huge number of issues and, you know, it's made it very clear that the extent of that impact on a whole mixture of people and organisations. So I think, and actually my response does, I invite members to contribute to that work. So I'm very, very pleased if you're to receive your thoughts on other areas that we should include and how we make those impact assessments as effective as possible, because there's no point having them if they don't really, you know, address the issue. So very much welcome any thoughts you have and indeed from other members as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. That leads to your last question then to Matt Furness.
And I'd just like to start by saying thank you, Matt, for a very comprehensive reply, both in terms of the description of what's going on and the numbers to back it up. Just looking at the end part in terms of the numbers, it looks like the number of sessions for bikeability level one has increased substantially by about 95 sessions, whereas bikeability two hasn't increased by that much and has led to a significant reduction in the numbers trained at bikeability level two. That's in your table two, which that chimes with the experience I've had talking to residents here where, you know, they've gone to a school and rather than it being offered to all children at a class in the school, it's only being offered to half the class. But I note in your reply that you're saying that the schools can request more courses, dot, 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 subject to cycling instructor availability. I mean, would you be able to assure me today and schools across the county that if schools want more, they can get more? Because otherwise, it looks like under COVID, albeit, as you say, higher quality training for those who get trained, we risk having fewer of our young people having cycle training as a result of COVID.
Thank you for your supplementary question, councillor Essex. Yes, as you can see, we've had to reduce the sizes of the groups due to COVID. So that has meant that I do think the team's done a fantastic job in having such high numbers of pupils being trained on bikeability. And that's also a reflection of the increased investment that we've made by taking it up to £510,000 a year for students being able to do bikeability at a much lower cost. I think it really very much depends with the schools, because these lessons are actually taking place during the during the day, during the school hours. If the schools are willing to put aside more time for children and subject to the availability of the instructors with social distancing and all the precautions being taken place, then yes, we should be able to get as many who would like it.
Thank you. That sounds like an incredibly positive response. I look forward to it happening. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Jonathan. We'll now move on to questions from the public, of which there are three, starting with John Ward. John, do you have a supplementary at all?
Thank you for your question. Thank you for your answer. I totally agree with the first sentence of your answer. But your mention of KPMG has indeed prompted a supplementary. Will Surrey be prepared to share with the 11 districts and boroughs the results from the work on this matter by PricewaterhouseCoopers that has been ongoing for some time? I guess that might make the districts and boroughs more inclined to exceed your request for them to share the results of the KPMG work. Thank you.
Well, that's a matter, John. You're the leader of Waverley Borough Council. It's a matter for you whether you wish to share the work at KPMG. I mean, both of these reports have been prepared using public money. I would encourage you and the other district and borough leaders to engage with the county in relation to that work. As I understand it, it is looked at ways in which savings can be delivered through the district and boroughs by shared services and so on, to the extent that the county can participate in that, then absolutely we'd like to do that. This is about reducing the total cost of delivering at least the back office services for local government. And, you know, we would definitely encourage you to do that. The PWC report was prepared specifically in relation to the unitary application and deals predominantly with the financial issues, some of which we'll touch on a bit later on in terms of the inequality across the county when we look at the economy paper. So, you know, if your question is, is the county happy to engage with KPMG to look at ways in which we can collectively save money, then absolutely the answer is yes. at ways in which we can collectively save money, then absolutely the answer is yes. Okay, thank you very much. The next question then is from John Oliver, though I don't believe he's attending this meeting, so I assume there's no supplementary. The next question was from Sally Blake. Sally, do you have a supplementary to?
I do, yes. Please.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the response, first of all. Your new tree strategy started a year ago with the target to plant 1.2 million trees by 2030, about 110,000 trees a year. In the first year, 11,000 trees have been planted, only 10% of that target. On 28th of April, the cabinet agreed a delivery plan would be completed by September to align with the start of the current tree planting season. This project and its timing is critical to your climate change strategy and also to the improvement of biodiversity and air quality. When will the delivery plan be completed and shared, please? And will it include annual planting targets and sites and include the current tree planting season? If not, you could lose another year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms Blake, for your supplementary. We're bringing forward the delivery mechanism for the trees. It's not a target to plant 120,000 trees every year, absolutely not. We will be planting trees, some years we'll be planting more and others less. You have to understand that certain areas, we're already looking at three large areas from our countryside estate to planters woodland. So we won't be planting one or two trees there, we'll be planting thousands of trees. On some of our bigger schemes, particularly the River Thames scheme, we'll be looking at planting probably hundreds of thousands of trees on that site, as the trees will absorb water. So we're not, you know, some years we're going to have probably more than others. The scheme only came forward, and we are now hitting, in April, we're now hitting our first tree planting season now. We're purchasing trees already. We had a really, really good positive seminar with county members yesterday, and we're then rolling out that seminar across all our boroughs and districts through the local committees going forward over the coming months. So lots of sites have been identified. If you yourself have any sites in mind, can I suggest you take those forward through your county councillor, and they can be put forward for consideration. We're also looking to our partners, to the Woodland Trust, National Trust, to also plant trees. A number of trees are being planted. We've got the World War One site in Langley Vale, up in Tadworth and Epsom, and over 20,000 trees were planted there just last year, and they haven't been included in our figures. So we need to get a proper reporting mechanism in place. And I'm sure once that is in place, we'll be able to demonstrate to you that we are actually planting a lot of trees, and we will certainly hit our target in 10 years' time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that. That sounds very positive. It would be good to have a delivery plan to look at, to have on the table. And it would be good to see the monitoring arrangements. Thank you very much.
Pleasure, thank you.
Thank you, Sally. Good to see you again. Natalie, we'll pick that point up and we will have a, because it's an important initiative. I mean, it is just to reinforce, I mean, that our commitment is to facilitate the planting of those 1.2 million trees, partly ourselves and partly through partners. But we'll have a mechanism for reporting that back. Okay, so thank you very much. That finishes the questions. Item 4C are petitions, of which there are none. Item 4D, representations received on reports, and there are none there either. So we move to item five, which is reports in select committees. And we have two to consider. The first is a report on the No Wrong Door task group. That group, working group, was chaired by Lesley Steeds. Lesley, I think you're going to just introduce it for us.
Yes, thank you, leader. Today, I'm presenting the report of the No Wrong Door task group, which was considered by the Children, Families, Lifelong Learning and Culture Select Committee on the 21st of September. The No Wrong Door model was first developed by North Yorkshire County Council in 2015. The key reason for introducing a No Wrong Door is that young people who enter care as teenagers generally have a worse experience than younger entrants. Adolescents entrance often experience wide ranging, complex social and emotional needs and greater placement instability. They also tend to attain worse outcomes than younger entrants, particularly in terms of education, employment and training, and post-care accommodation stability. Amongst other things, looks after children tell the council that they want better communication between staff, to remain with their birth families where possible, to receive more consistent support, not to have to tell their story to multiple services, and to be able to access support more easily. The No Wrong Door seeks to address those needs and to mitigate the aforementioned challenges experienced by adolescent entrance to the care system. The task group primarily utilised targeted requests for information, a public survey and remote meetings with witnesses to gather the information required to assess the suitability of the No Wrong Door for introduction in Surrey. The task group found that the model has been effective at reducing care episodes, improving outcomes for service users and creating cost savings elsewhere, and is consistent with the priorities and policies of Surrey County Council. The introduction of the model has strong support at member and senior officer level within the Children, Families, Lifelong Learning and Culture Directorate. Fundamental issues do persist with Surrey's children's services. However, despite the presence of some barriers, the conditions in Surrey are such that the model will likely be efficacious if adopted. The task group supports the introduction of a No Wrong Door in Surrey and has made nine recommendations relating to the development and implementation of the local service. I have received and note the Cabinet Member for Children, Young People and Families' comprehensive response to the task group's recommendations, and I thank her for it. The response will be considered by the Children, Families, Lifelong Learning and Culture Select Committee at its next meeting on the 14th of December 2020. In respect of recommendation eight, I was pleased to learn that the name No Wrong Door will not be well known by young people, and note the Cabinet Member's view that the name may help attract staff to the new service. I support the Cabinet Member's decision to maintain the name No Wrong Door for the service. In respect of recommendations one and two, I am assured by the Cabinet Member's representation that the accreditation of Surrey's No Wrong Door by North Yorkshire County Council will not prevent the further development of the service to meet local need, and I am satisfied for the reasons the Cabinet Member has set out in her response, that the benefits of the accreditation of the model outweigh the cost of its accreditation. I support the Cabinet Member's decision to proceed with accreditation. I would like to thank, to take this opportunity to thank all those task group members who contributed their time and knowledge to this inquiry, particularly those persons and organisations external to the council who submitted written evidence or met with the task group to discuss the No Wrong Door model. I would also like to thank our officers Benjamin Awkell and Brian Ecraston and Davis for the excellent work they have done for this task group. Thank you very much. Thank you, leader. Thank you.
Lesley, thank you very much, and thank you for chairing that group and for your really helpful input. I'm going to ask Mary Lewis to respond in a minute, but before that, I think, yes, Jonathan Essex.
Thank you, leader. I just wanted to make a brief comment on this item, if I may, in part of your very long agenda. As a member of the Corporate Parenting Board, which is the group of councillors that considers the way are looked after children and care leavers are looked after, my question really was, or points were really around comparing North Yorkshire to Surrey and how big Surrey is, and whether doing this in two of our children's centres is enough to have an impact across the scale of the number of children we need to support in Surrey with just one speech and language therapist and one life coach in each? Or, you know, whether if we're going to make this successful and really embed it, we need to make it a bigger initiative, if you like, than what's set out? And noting in the report, as a corporate parent, that it says in, I think it's table one, that there weren't any young persons' views and any looked after children or care leavers' views taken into account. And although the report notes that this will be considered an implementation, I wonder if there's an opportunity to speak to them as soon as possible. Three other points, if I may. In paragraph 30, the No Wrong Door report references the signs of safety as part of the procedures used in North Yorkshire. But I understand that Surrey ended signs of safety in 2018. So I wondered how we're going to implement No Wrong Door in a way that's going to work if we've just ended something which is part of where it's being done there? And then in terms of implementation, paragraph 50 noted the less than adequate way in which the transition to independent living has occurred under No Wrong Door in your Yorkshire. And then later in the report, it talks about the importance of recruitment and retention of staff as risk factors. And I just wanted to raise that and just be assured that in the implementation, those issues will be picked up. But I'm sure this will come to the Corporate Parenting Board, of course. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Mary Lewis, would you like to respond?
Thank you very much. And I'd like to thank Lesley Steeds and all the people on this task group. If anyone's looked in detail at their report, you'll see what an excellent piece of work it is. And it provides something for the future, because we now have a group of people who have become, developed a level of expertise on this policy, so that they will be able to do really good scrutiny of it as it's implemented and into the future. And I really appreciate that work and the fact that they've got in at such an early stage of policy development. They've also drawn my attention, as a lead member, to a number of serious things that, you know, needed considering in more detail. And I'm hoping that my answer indicates that these have been done. I was a little bit concerned about recommendations one and two, because it seemed as if there were serious concerns about accepting accreditation. And although there is a cost to the accreditation, I want to emphasise that one of the principles on which we are working on our improvement in children's services is that we are using expertise from elsewhere in the country and initiatives that have worked elsewhere. And there is no way that we would, as an inadequate authority ourselves at the moment, be trusted to invent our own version of this. And it's important that Ofsted recognise what's being done in North Yorkshire and are very happy for us to do the same work, the kind of work here. So I wanted to make sure that we didn't sort of shy away from joining in with the accredited North Yorkshire policy. And I'm pleased to hear from Lesley Steeds that she, as the chairman of that task group, feels that the answer that's given in the response to the report assures her that we're doing it for all the right reasons, and the cost is more than justified by the fact that we're going to make some savings, as North Yorkshire did, and some savings in what is a huge budget, £16.1 million a year for external residential placements. I could say a lot more, but there is a lot of detail in the response to which I draw my Cabinet colleague's attention. But I would like to address some of the comments also made by Jonathan Essex. First of all, I really respect and am grateful for Jonathan's enthusiasm as a corporate parent. But there is a difference between the No Wrong Door work and corporate parenting, because the work of No Wrong Door is to avoid taking adolescents into care. The reasons for that are that the outcomes for teenagers who come into care are not good anywhere in the country. And so the idea of the No Wrong Door, in a nutshell, is that we use a small part of our residential estate for very short term interventions with teenagers and interventions with their parents back at home, so that they can be reunited. And those teenagers never do come into care and therefore would not be under the responsibilities of Jonathan as a corporate parent. These teenagers will have social work, you know, really strong social work interventions, which will support them into getting back into their homes and being able to be safe at home, because we know that the outcomes are likely to be much better for them there. Jonathan's mentioned his question about our model of social work practice, picking up some detail from the report. It is true that in North Yorkshire, they have the signs of safety model in place. And in Surrey, we have embraced family resilience, family safeguarding. But both of these are strengths based models of social work practice. So there isn't sufficient difference between them, that it wouldn't be possible for them to work in synchronicity together. And so I think that that aspect of his worry can easily be alleviated. North Yorkshire have also, since the task group met, said that they are, you know, interested in working with us and that we would benefit from the support of the North Yorkshire team. And there is no problem with us having the slightly different social work models. Both of them are recognised by Ofsted. I wanted to also address the recommendation eight of the task group, which talks about how important it is to involve our young people through the user voice and participation team in the design of No Wrong Door. And we all, that is officers, members and the task group, agree that that is really important. And to reassure Jonathan, that is well in hand, but the task group met over the summer in a very short space of time to do their report, and there was limited opportunity to get the young people to contribute. But we have agreed, and it's all here in the response to the task group, that user voice and participation, which is our service for bringing the voices of children, young people into our work, that they will be involved in the implementation of this, in coming up with whatever names it may be the young people think would be better for the hubs themselves. And I think that I'd be happy to go back in more detail if there's anything further that he wants to know about it. I'd say thank you again to the No Wrong Door task group. It's an important piece of work and look forward to discussing it further at the scrutiny committee in December, by which time we'll be even further forward with the work to actually get started on this and to be delivering services better for teenagers, so that we're not bringing them into care when we know that this does not help them in the longer term. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mary. And again, just to repeat our thanks to Lesley Steeds as chair and to the working group for their report. The next one is, the next item is the report of the Mental Health Task Group, which was chaired by Nick Darby. Nick?
Yes, thank you, Tim. Yeah, the Mental Health Task Group report, which we presented to the Adult and Health Select Committee on the 15th of October. We've heard a lot about mental health already this afternoon. It's clearly a vital issue and ever more so due to the Covid issues. In many ways, the mental health is described as a Cinderella service, but one we simply cannot afford to ignore. We deliberately undertook this investigation from the bottom up and effectively called the task group the patient journey. So we wanted to understand the perspective of service users and those more directly responsible for their care. What I'd like to do is to cover several of the specific recommendations, which before the cabinet today. The very first one was the request that Surrey County Council conduct a review in relation to third sector providers and the length of their contracts. At the moment, they seem to be for three years. The evidence that we had from the providers we spoke to was that three years, although it may appear quite a long time, is not actually a long time for them to get their feet under the table and to consider additional services or improvements or whatever. So the sooner have they got going, then they then having to consider the possibility of renewal of their contracts and take it from there. I understand that there may be additional criteria necessary to have extended contracts, but my feeling is that we need to look into that, those doing the commissioning, and to see what can be done. Uh those doing the commissioning and to see what what can be done. The second, in a sense, it's a set of recommendations. It's five, six and seven. It's to do with training. And in particular, uh training uh induction uh level training actually for ourselves. Uh so that we all understand, um maybe uh discussions as to uh the new councillors as to mental health issues. And indeed, for our our own uh existing councillors, uh member seminars and and similar, because it is a vital area. And the more understanding we have, the better. And the uh and one of the others was for GPs to receive effectively regular updating as to what services are available uh for um those who come come to see them, so that it there's easier signposting. That came out quite a lot. And the the third, in a sense, set is um liaising. Uh Surrey County Council liaising as necessary, that item uh three, recommendation three, was in relation to IT infrastructure. There does seem to be uh what I would describe as a mishmash of IT, perhaps for understandable reasons. And the systems don't talk to each other. And again, particularly for the third sector providers, it was quite difficult to get information um for and from um uh GPs, for instance, uh so that the right care was given as quickly as possible. And it's very much a question here of no one being left behind, the two thousand and thirty vision. I fully understand that there are all sorts of causes, uh and all sorts of calls on money, existing resources. But I have a but here, however many calls there are on the public purse. And I'm not going to say the system is broken, but from the report we've given overall, I have no doubt that significant improvements are necessary to the mental health service which is provided overall. I don't mean just in in Surrey. Uh and if it's a question of realigning resources or somehow uh pleading for further resources, I would very much welcome that being cried from the rooftops. I'll stop there as far as the report is concerned, but I I want to give thanks uh to all who've been involved. Um Bernie Muir, Angela Goodwin and Chris Potten, who we co-opted as the members of the task group. Our officers, Ben Cullimore and Xanthie McNichol, who did an absolutely magnificent job in getting us together and getting the report together. Uh and particularly also to those who freely gave of their time to give evidence. Mental health is not an easy subject, in particular for those service users. It can't have been easy. So uh thanks very much. And that's my report.
Thank you very much, Nick. Um I think Sinead Moon, are you going to uh respond in the first instance?
Thank you, leader. And uh thank you also to councillor Derby. Uh councillor Derby, no doubt you've had the opportunity to read my response to the work of your task group. So rather than run through this word for word, I would like to summarise by saying that I very much welcome the report and the recommendations from the Mental Health Task Group and commend the task group members and officers involved and participants on the amount of time and work that has been put into this. This piece of work is incredibly helpful in terms of raising the profile of mental health and the awareness of the impact across the system as well as the individuals' lives. The well-intended recommendations have certainly invoked high level discussions, which in my mind is a really good thing. The task group has also highlighted the difficulties, challenges and inequalities people with mental ill health often face. Whilst much of the substance of what has what has been presented is rightfully based on user feelings, in order to support our teams in continuing to drive forward transformative change, I note and commend the task group's commitment to taking this initial piece of work to the next level. So it is timely, therefore, that the leader in his opening speech has announced that Surrey County Council and Surrey Heartlands ICS will be launching a mental health summit scheduled for the nineteenth of November. The summit is being held in acknowledgement of the increasing numbers of children, young people and adults across the country who are facing mental health problems, expanded by funding challenges and the current Covid nineteen pressures. The summit is being held to identify the actions needed to address the current challenges and to plan for the future. I know that myself and some of some of my cabinet colleagues are looking forward to actively engaging in the work of the summit with key partners such as providers, health, the voluntary and charity sector, and most important of all, mental health service users. I would ask that the chairman seeks to ensure that his task group participates in the summit. And I encourage him to take the opportunity to align the task group's next step stage priorities with the aims and ambitions of the Mental Health Summit. Thank you, leader, and thank you, councillor Derby.
Thank you very much, Sinead. Um Mary Lewis.
Thank you, chairman. Um I very much welcome the um idea of a mental health summit, because one thing that comes out clearly from uh the work of the task group is that how many similarities there are between issues facing children and young people in mental health services and adults. And I think there's a lot of work that could be done to uh align things and to uh make sure that the strengths of each are are used to support the other, if you see what I mean. And we are a little bit further on the recommissioning of our emotional wellbeing and mental health services in children's. I mean, at the moment, in a in a very sensitive discussion phase with an alliance of providers. But some aspects that have already been agreed through the committees of in common are the ring fencing of four point five million pounds for early intervention work and the fact it's actually ring fenced. And and maybe this is something that needs to happen similarly in adult services to make sure that um adults are seen in non-clinical settings and seen as soon as problems emerge. Similarly, we've been, we have been working um a lot with the voluntary community faith sector and um the Surrey Wellbeing Partnership of twelve local voluntary community faith organisations and some national partners are part of the bid that's being considered at the moment. So I think that's another area where we can look at uh work that's already happened in children's and think about how that could also happen in other adults. To get those early intervention talking therapies well established would be helpful to residents of all ages. So um I welcome um the summit and look forward to participating. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Marissa Heath.
Um thank you. Um just following on from Mary's point, this is an area that's really been interesting me, because as I've been doing the sort of drill down into the work around transitions, it's something that's really stood out. Now, transitions are a point in a young person's life where they're particularly vulnerable to um mental health issues. And I think that it's got to be one of our priorities. I know Nick's group did um touch on that. I've seen some points within his um report around that area, but just to emphasise how much we need adult social services to work with children's services to really tackle this and to look at what adult mental health is going to look like for those young people well ahead of the transitions. Um I think obviously the Preparing for Adult Steering Group will look at it as well. And we need to um build a response that might tackle mental health issues in slightly different ways, perhaps more informal ways, working with our voluntary groups. Um really looking to get to those low level problems before they grow into something much more difficult to tackle. Um I'll just say again, our young people with learning difficulties um and other challenges are our most high risk group, I think, for mental health issues. And they really are the key priorities. So um I I think the summit's an excellent idea. And I think there's a lot of um really good work that we can do around this to improve outcomes across the board. Thank you, leader.
Thank you, Marissa. Yeah, I think that's absolutely right. I mean, that 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 summit is a a a great opportunity to get you know, all the all the key people in the room and to get all of these issues there and then to to, you know, to work on a on a plan um going forward. Um Nick, did you want to um come back at all on any of that?
Um well, just two things, just to to thank everyone for their contribution and uh otherwise to say I very much uh welcome our task group, all its members, uh taking part in the mental health summit. I very much welcome that indeed and look forward to taking part in it. So thank you very much.
Excellent. And thank you very much and 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 your working group again for for all that you have done uh to to contribute to that, to to that conversation.
Thank you.
Okay, um so um there were two sets of recommendations here. Um on the, in relation to the um the No Wrong Door task group, there was recommendation on page seventeen of the supplementary agenda or page thirty one of the main pack. I'm not going to read those recommendations as we we we, I think we covered those. Um and then secondly, in relation to the Mental Health Task Group, there were recommendations on page twenty one of the supplementary agenda or two two eight of the main pack. Um can I assume that those um are agreed? Thank you very much. Um, okay, so moving on then to item uh six. Um which were various decisions of cabinet members, et cetera. Um there were five decisions. The first of those was in relation to the fostering report and statement of purpose two thousand and nineteen twenty. Mary Lewis, did you want to comment on that?
Simply to say it was a good report, leader, clear. And um I think uh I'm looking forward to seeing the next one a little bit earlier in the financial year, um probably April, so that I can uh pick up on things a bit more quickly than having it coming in the autumn. But it was a good report and uh showed what strides were taken in the year covered, which was uh nineteen twenty in terms of recruitment and introducing new models of support for foster carers. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Um the second one was um a consultation on admission arrangements. Julie, I was.
Uh just to say, leader, that this is a statutory consultation. It's about proposed changes to admission arrangements for our community community and voluntary controlled schools from September twenty twenty two. So we're running this consultation to first of December this year to give adequate time for um people to make their applications.
Excellent. Thank you very much. The third one related to the Guildford Bus Corridor and Bus End Enhancements. Matt Farnes.
Thank you, leader. Uh this is very much just our continued commitment to uh the bus operators and to provide uh more reliable and punctual journey times uh and help them uh with uh the bus patronage. So uh it's an excellent bit and uh looking forward to seeing it rolled out.
Thank you very much. Uh and the next two were decisions of the committee in common. One related to terms of reference, slightly mended, and the other to um procurement to children's emotional wellbeing and mental health service, which Mary Lewis has touched upon. So those are all for noting. Thank you. Um then we'll move on to item seven, which is an update. Uh in fact, back to you, Mary, an update on children's services. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, leader. Well, I think the agenda so far has uh shown people just how uh important improving children's services remains as a strategic priority of the council, because it seems to be coming up everywhere today. And uh I'm pleased to know to uh to hear that. And I'm grateful for this opportunity to update everyone on the progress that we continue to make over the last six months with improvements to children's services. There's no doubt that there's been challenges in terms of changed ways of working and increased need for our services. But nevertheless, um there have been a number of recent achievements, which I think are worth mentioning. One of them has actually um grown out of the uh the the situation we faced in um in the lockdown, because we were able to change um our approach to re reaching children, young people most in need of our support through an extended out of hours and safeguarding services. And this was particularly for teenagers and their families. Some of the ways we've been working, we're going to keep in place permanently, and some of them are leading to the work on uh No Wrong Door, which we will be doing with partners and which you've heard about earlier in the agenda. So that's really have been making a positive out of out of a crisis, which has been very, very good. Uh we know that it's very, very important to respond quickly to young people who are who are caught up in um situations of the of domestic abuse. And I'm really pleased that the outreach services provided by Surrey Domestic Abuse Partnership have continued during the crisis. And there've been increased contacts nationally to the helpline. But in Surrey, we've had um our emergency place centre, which was set up very, very quickly, which we've been able to use. Uh we've also had the extra domestic abuse places, which we've talked about before. And but these were places for children, young people, and uh was an uh an emergency centre, which I was I was very impressed with the speed and of the quality of uh of the uh provision that was made by our staff when when for young people who are unable to return home. Um I'd like to um talk a little bit about how we've started to implement implement the corporate parenting strategy that was agreed in February by at full council. And the first priority of all parents is to provide a safe and comfortable home for children uh where they can be happy and flourish. And for most of the children growing up in our care, this means a safe and comfortable foster home. So it's important that we have not held back during uh the last six months in terms of expanding our Mockingbird um model. And Mockingbird is a hub and spoke model of foster care arrangements, which provides something like an extended family of foster carers. So children grow up in the equivalent of an extended foster care family. And this is supported both to the children and to their carers. The third hub was launched in August, and I'm pleased that that was able to go ahead. And as a result of the um capital programme that the county council's bringing uh bringing forward, five point five million pounds of capital have been made available uh for children's services to develop two new com- uh community children's home. Homes with the third one due to come to the cabinet in twenty twenty one and to rebuild the shore contact centre. So this is further evidence of how we're really making sure that children in our care are having suitable buildings, a suitable environment um that fits with with today's uh expectations. And I'm pleased that that's making progressing really well. In addition to these uh improvements, Children's Services has been selected for one of the uh Surrey County Council corporate digital innovation projects. And one of the criticisms we've had in the past is that maybe the whole county council corporately hasn't done enough to support children's services. But the fact we were selected for one of only two digital projects um for innovation shows that the county council is working differently and that it's a priority for everyone, not just in word, but in fact. So um the project that we're working on is um to have uh children's needs identified early and met quickly by residents being able themselves to do an entirely self-service process with a bringing together of all the information, advice in Surrey in one place. So that um what things that can be hard to navigate at the moment are much easier for parents and all the rich resources of the county in terms of early help and targeted support are made available through this one platform. And I'm pleased to say that that work seems to be going really well. So we were grateful for for the opportunity for innovation on that. And a further join up between services within the council has been achieved through the uh development of a learner's single point of access known as the L-Spar. And that's gradually going to integrate with our children's self a single point of access in social care. And to that end, uh this the C-Spar has moved to a newly uh prepared office space, which is ready for the L-Spar um colleagues to be together. And in fact, that has now started. And um I I think you'll hear perhaps more about that from Julie Isles. So again, a bringing together of uh things across the directorate so that they work better for parents. You've heard already today um how uh our emotional wellbeing and mental health service recommissioning is is progressing. And uh we are still in discussions with the the Alliance of Local and National Partners, but absolutely determined that this will lead to transformation of the service and quickly, because that's what our um residents expect from us. This week, um as colleagues may know, is National Care Leavers Week. If you want to follow it, you can follow it on social media under NCLW twenty twenty. And some of us as members and a lot of the officers have taken up a challenge from our care leavers and um are working on how to to live on a care leaver's budget. And it does draw attention for all of us to how important it is that we develop life skills for our young people growing up in our care, the same life skills that we needed to learn when we were eighteen. And but of of course, most of us were fortunate enough to have the backup of families who could pick up the pieces. For them, they've got to learn these life skills um without that same family backup. And we want to make sure that we're working with them and modelling um in this case, uh excellent budgeting, so that uh they can um, you know, see that it it can be done, however tricky it is. And uh it's good for the rest of us as well, having to think more carefully about how we're and are we are shopping and cooking uh on Care Leavers Week. We've been very fortunate that the Department of Education has appointed Essex County Council as our partner in practice to help us with improvement. And they are outstanding for They are outstanding for children's services and specialise in working with other authorities. They came last month and did what they call a stocktake of our services. And the outcomes from that stocktake are very, very helpful to us in devising and delivering on our Getting to Good Plan, which is the next iteration of our improvement plan. So we're grateful for that. And we've got started on the Getting to Good Plan. And I look forward to the arrival of our new director, executive director, Rachel Wardell, in a month's time. And hopefully she'll be able to see already that we have some items ticked off on our Getting to Good Plan. Rachel, in her old authority, Merton, has just experienced an Ofsted inspection. So she'll be coming to us with some very worthwhile experience of what the new Ofsted regime requires of us. And I look forward to working with her and to showing her all these improvements that have happened over the summer, just as I've tried to demonstrate them to you. So thank you very much.
Mary, thank you for that. Very comprehensive and very useful update. I've come a couple of speakers here, starting with Julie.
Yes, just picking up on what Mary said about the Learner Spa. It's what we might have called the front door previously. It has gone live following a soft launch. So it's a single point of access. There were no big announcements until we'd had the resource established and worked through any initial teething troubles. But it is now being promoted to colleagues across schools and other agencies. And it's positively impacting the improvement across the special needs service. In the first month of taking calls, we resolved 365 of the 500 calls at first contact. So that signpost into early support has been strengthened. And I think that speaks to what councillor Hammond questioned about earlier. Our updated local offer pages reflect those changes and provide a request for assessment form. So the multidisciplinary team are deployed to great effect now. And of the caller types, a large proportion of them are coming from parents and carers initially. And there's an increase in proportion of professionals calling through to the L-Spar. So all requests for assessment are now coming through that Learner's Single Point of Access.
Right, Mary. Thank you, Julie. Julie Grand.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Chairman. And thank you, Mary, for your report. I noticed that you mentioned the digital innovation project that Children's Services has been selected for. And as the cabinet member who has the room for IT and digital, I needed also for customer services. I just wanted to highlight the work that we have been doing together with Children's Services. And I know Children's Services are trailblazing in some aspects. For example, they are actively developing their digital roadmap, where they're looking at organisation, they're looking at the systems, they're looking at data flows. They are being very comprehensive in their approach. And they are taking digital journeys in every possible aspect that can be considered. In that respect, they're almost doing a piece of work that no other service has been able to do so comprehensively so far. And this month of October, for example, we have a very good summary already of the work they've done with Surrey Heartlands. And we can see how in the future we will incorporate areas such as learning disabilities and emotional wellbeing and mental health. So there has been a substantial amount of cross-disciplinary work across the services with Children's Services. So I really welcome the opportunity to highlight that they are undertaking this very seriously. In respect of the contact centre, as Julie has explained, we have been incredibly successful with our implementation of the single point of access. And again, that has meant that we have had the contact centre working with Children's Services very closely, undertaking sessions of training so that the teams can answer the questions and only those questions that require very specialist attention and then sent to the children's services as such. And of course, with the first time resolution rate of 80%, that has been very successful. And it means that when those telephoning with queries, be it families, young people, institutions such as schools or the police, when the call is attended by the children's services, it's the most specialist call and is the one that can provide the best service at our time. So I think I just wanted to illustrate how, from a corporate services perspective, we are really engaging with Children's Services and their own transformation journey. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Sophie. Mary, do you want to make a closing comment?
Thank you. Just to round off, Leader, I think you can tell from the busyness of everything that's been going on over the summer that I really do need to thank our senior officers, our middle management, our frontline social workers and all our partners, teachers, police, housing officers in districts and boroughs, health colleagues. Because this is a huge piece of work that requires the wider partnership of professionals for children to be all working hard together, including our own IT department, our own education department. So thank you to all those who've kept up this work over the summer. Thank you.
And thank you to you, Mary, for all that you do. Yeah, we have made some really good progress with Children's Services and confident that that will continue and be accelerated indeed under Rachel Wardell when she joins us shortly. And thank you. We'll move on then to the next item, which is item eight, any delegated or decisions in relation to COVID-19? There were none. Item nine is the Organisation Strategy Refresh. This is, and I touched on this in my opening comments, the 2030 vision was widely consulted on and contributed to by partners and organisations, residents across the county. And it provides a framework ready for the delivery of our services. COVID has meant that we've had to look at how we're delivering some of those services and adjust the way in which we have been delivering them to respond to the crisis of COVID-19 and to make sure that all of those vulnerable residents, in particular across the county, are being supported. And with the work that we have done through the community impact assessment, that has helped us identify some longer term needs as well. So what this does is to take the 2030 vision. We haven't changed that at all. And the 10 areas that we identified in relation to both five in relation to people and five in relation to place remain true and the overarching intention and ambition to ensure that no one is left behind. But as I mentioned earlier, we're now sort of narrowing that focus for the immediate term into the five, sorry, four key areas of the economy, health inequality, greener future and empowering communities. And then there are a number of priorities to sort of underpin that. I'm not intending to go through this in detail. It will come to full council, where I'm sure we'll have a longer debate. But just to pick out a few, just a few points. I'll deal with the economic piece when we come on to the specific paper on the economy. On health inequality, you know, it's very good news that we're going to, I hope, collectively address mental health issues shortly and find a way of improving the way those services are engaged, the way we engage with residents that access them. But also, obviously, COVID itself has caused all sorts of physical difficulties. So we absolutely need to do this, tackle health inequality with Surrey Heartlands, our Health and Care Partnership and other organisations that can assist. So that integrated approach, particularly in relation to social care and health and ways in which we can reduce the inequality of life expectancy, which is quite marked, the difference across the county is absolutely key. The greener agenda is really also taking the opportunity to build on some of the behaviour changes. I think, you know, we've done some surveying of residents and over 70% have seen as a positive, the only problem, one of the few positives from COVID, the reduction in congestion across the county. And we have been actively promoting schemes that would encourage people to get on their, you know, either to get on a bike or to walk, but to be able to do so safely through our towns and villages and out in the countryside. If as a society, we are going to get anywhere near to hitting the carbon reduction targets that have been set, that will absolutely require significant reduction in the use of vehicles, either by active travel or by using public transport. And I appreciate just at the moment public transport is not many people's preferred form of transport, but hopefully that will change in due course. And obviously, that has a significant impact on air quality. And then on empowering communities, which is the fourth major area of focus. And you'll be hearing a lot about this over the coming weeks. We have been doing for sometimes significant work on ways in which we can really look at people, the locality that people live in, their place. You know, it's hugely important that our communities are involved, if they wish to be involved in decisions that affect their immediate area. So this is building on the work that we have done, but we're going to accelerate that. And there will be some, at the next cabinet meeting, there'll be more detail that we'll be able to share with you. But it is about getting better engagement, having more local voices in local decisions. And as I mentioned earlier, coordination between local government, all tiers of local government, the health system, police, businesses, communities, including schools, the voluntary, the community, the faith sector and so on. And it's really about a community focused approach in everything that we do. You know, the way that we work, our culture and the services that we provide. So and we've got some specific examples of that, which we've already started to talk about in terms of your funds. Surrey, the Capital Fund for Communities to Access, the Library Transformation and so on. And one of the items, as I mentioned earlier, on Caterham Hill will be, I think, a good example of that. So I would encourage people to read the documents. You know, and if people think that we are missing something, then please do let us know. I mean, it's about what we need to do for residents and what they want us to do. So it's a comprehensive document, but it's, you know, we're not changing our approach here. We're just simply building on some of those areas that are now more immediate, partly as a result of COVID. I see Chris Button has his hand up, so I'll go to Chris first.
Thank you, Leader. It would be remiss of me not to repeat some of the remarks I made when this was discussed before. I want to pay tribute to Rachel Crossley and her colleagues in the strategy team for the work they did, providing some stress tested scenario plans, which particularly enabled the working group I chaired from the Chairs and Vice Chairs Group to do an in-depth look at some of the really important issues that are outlined in here. And of course, I reread this report within an hour of reading the report on winter resilience, which also draws upon some of those stress testing procedures which Rachel and her team deliberated upon. And it's quite clear that the issue on tackling health inequalities is one which is going to be very, very challenging to meet during the coming winter and during next year. And I have to say, I welcome wholeheartedly the emphasis that's been placed on it. It's a joy to be part of an organisation that is really genuinely committed at its core to tackling health inequalities, in particular mental health. And whatever we may disagree on, I am very proud to be part of that process. And thank you very much indeed, Leader.
And thank you, Chris. I mean, you know, we are all here to do the best that we can for our residents irrespective of perhaps our political backgrounds. And I very much appreciate your support for that work and indeed echo your thanks to Rachel Crossley and indeed to Marie Snelling and the rest of the team. I mean, there are, you know, particularly on this agenda, there are many things. Many of these reports all come back to those sort of central themes. But health inequality and addressing inequality in all forms is absolutely a key focus for us. So I think I'll leave it at that point with, there is a recommendation on page 281, which is to agree the content of this refreshed strategy and to recommend it to the county council for approval. I'll assume that's agreed unless I see any hands to the contrary. Thank you very much. So we'll move on then to item 10, which is a delivery of care leavers accommodation alive in a family centre in Caterham Hill. And I think Mel Few, you're going to present the report.
That's correct. Thank you, Leader. This paper is requesting that 5.6 million of capital funding be brought forward from the list of pipeline projects into this current financial year. In terms of the asset and place strategy, which was approved by Cabinet in April 2019, it sets out the criteria in deciding on the future of the country, of the county's fixed properties. And will be examined, should be examined and grouped into categories such as those that are held for a strategic hold, those that we should reuse and intensify the use thereof, those that should be redeveloped and those that should be disposed. I'm delighted that in this case, it's great to see that we will be able to use an existing county freehold property to co-locate a library, a family centre and create accommodation for care leavers. Following the approval of the transfer, a detailed scheme and the usual planning process will take place with Tandridge Borough Council going forward. I would also ask Mary and Julie to talk to their respective views on this proposal.
Thank you, Mel. Before I bring them in, can I invite Chris Button, who is also a divisional member, to comment first?
Leader, it's particularly a great pleasure to welcome in Care Leavers Week a proposal to provide accommodation for care leavers in a division which will be part of a welcoming community where I hope they will feel well supported by what the community offers them. I think it's excellent news that such an investment is to be made in my community. And I fully welcome the ambition and integrated nature of the proposed scheme, including a family centre, which I always believed through the difficulties of the reorganisation of children's centres, there needed to be a family centre in Caterham. And I'm delighted that that's been recognised and I thoroughly welcome the scheme. But it's a long agenda, Chairman, so I won't go on too long. What I will say though is paragraph 30 records the fact that councillor Few and councillor Mary Lewis were consulted. It says that I was, but I wasn't. And what I would say to you is that the so I read about this scheme when I saw the agenda paper for the cabinet. The parish council had believed until that time that the library was due to be a community library and had been making financial provision to support the development of the community library. So the parish council will be both delighted and slightly miffed that it wasn't involved. And it's a message, if you like, about how communities need a proper and robust consultation. I don't know how it got into the paper that I'd been consulted when I hadn't. I guess it must be an administrative problem. I would offer you all the support I can for my community to make this work. I offer you the support of the parish council in terms of facilitating any community engagement on it. And I offer you support in trying to get a planning application, which might be more difficult than the paper presents through Tandridge District Council's Planning Department, given the particular sensitivity of the site. The, as yet not fully understood implications of there now being a neighbourhood plan and a local plan, which is still with the inspector. So I'm fascinated by what the opportunity this provides. I'm grateful to the cabinet members for their support for this proposal. I'm delighted to see that the property programme is finally coming forward with some imaginative proposals. And I just would like to hope that the administrative problem, which left me out of the consultation, could be resolved. Thank you, Chairman, Leader.
Thank you, Chris. And I apologise that you weren't consulted. That was clearly an oversight. Mark Newton will pick up on the line. Uh Mark Newton will pick up on the on the library's points in a minute, if that's okay, but um I'll go to Julie Isles first.
Actually, leader, I was also going to just bring out the area of note for cultural services. Um and it's regard to the development of this new library. It underpins our commitment to improving the library provision in the communities that they currently serve. Um the current building requires significant maintenance works over the next five years or so. And it would require even more investment to provide a modern library. So this is a scheme that we've got the opportunity to bring forward earlier than expected. And it's in line with our commitment to co-locate services. So I very much welcome councillor Button's um approach about um getting the parish council involved. And and residents locally involved, because that does speak to the commitment to uh. Co-locate and co-design aspects of this exciting scheme. So in support of the strategic objectives, it develops the library as an anchor in the community. Um it will be a social hub, a cultural centre, a learning hub and an economic enabler. Which is very important in these times coming out of Covid. Also importantly, there will be no disruption to services during the construction period. Because a temporary library facility will be in place. So I'm very much looking forward to this being one of the flagship projects to take our new library provision forward.
Thank you, Julie. Um Mark, do you want to comment, please?
Uh thank you, leader, and uh thank you, Julie, for stealing most of what I was going to say. Um I'd just like to uh again apologise to Chris. We really haven't done a lot of the consultation work in respect of the 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 new library delivery, Chris. And I can assure you, once we start the co-design work, which we're hoping to do later this year. Into the early part of twenty twenty-one, we will make sure that you're fully aware of what's going on and be a part of that. This is an incredibly exciting project. This is going to be the start of what Surrey is going to be all about. This is moving closer to residents. This is building, a building, a legacy that will last for years to come. Which will be used by many, many people within the local community. And we're hoping, and I and it will be, an exemplar for the rest of the county as we move forward over the next five-year plan. So incredibly excited. We're hoping that by the end of twenty twenty-one, we'll be in a position to start building. It's it's going to be a fantastic opportunity for all involved. And Chris and everybody locally, be assured you will be consulted from the the very word go, right the way through to completion.
Thank you, Mark. Um and uh thank you, Chris, also for your offer to help navigate through the local planning process, which I'm sure. And the officers will be very pleased to take you up on. Uh so there are two recommendations. The first is to set aside five point six million uh for the scheme. And the second is to give delegated authority to Director Land and Property, the cabinet member for resources. For awarding the contract to redevelop the site, uh which includes construction works. And as Mark has said prior to that, that there will be um full local consultation. Um are those two recommendations agreed, please?
Agreed.
Okay, thank you very much. Um we'll move to the next item, item eleven. Um which is uh to do with adult social care, home-based care recommissioning, October twenty-one. Um and uh over to Sinead Mooney, thank you.
Thank you, leader. Uh this paper is important for several reasons. As you will all be aware, it is a statutory requirement of the CARE Act two thousand and fourteen. For the council to provide a home-based care service to vulnerable adults in Surrey. Home-based care is also a vital lifeline, enabling and supporting people to remain independent. And thrive in their own homes for as long as they can. Home-based care also plays an important role in providing reability to people who have left hospital. Improving their individual wellbeing and reducing long-term care needs. I hope I've set the scene as to why this paper is so important to us. Key highlights of the paper are the current service arrangements are due to end in September two thousand and twenty-one. With the newly commissioned service being operational by the first of October two thousand and twenty-one. This report sets out the significant progress in our journey to integrate with health. And I'm very pleased to say that this is a joint contract. Recommissioning of the home-based care service will bring about improvements in the current contracting arrangements. And our relationships with the provider market. The culture shift will move beyond simply commissioning care and support. Towards working with the market to embed reability practice and strength-based principles. To continue to enable individuals to strive for better outcomes and live with greater dignity and independence. We will be moving away from the traditional task and time approach. And will focus on maximising the use of care management information and technology-enabled care to promote better outcomes. Electronic call monitoring data and better key performance indicators will absolutely support this ambition. And will give a stronger oversight of the market and the quality of care being delivered. Our longer contract length will offer greater stability to our providers. And that can only mean better outcomes for our residents. Our approach to the market, as set out in this report, will also ensure we are better placed to source care. In the more difficult parts of Surrey and reduce the environmental impact of multiple providers travelling travelling across Surrey. Delivering care in the same areas. So with this in mind, chair, I would very much welcome my cabinet colleague's support for this report. As per the recommendations set out on page three hundred and seventeen of the Agenda Pack. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak on this paper.
Thank you, Sinead, and I'm quite sure you will get the support from the cabinet members. So Alison Griffiths.
Thank you, leader. Um yeah firstly, I'd like to thank councillor Mooney and her team. For working so hard to ensure Surrey residents who need support at home will be receiving such a high level of care. I would like to highlight that this is a great example of integration between Surrey County Council and our health colleagues at Surrey Heartlands. I welcome the new protocol to assist new providers of care under the Provider and Intervention Team as they develop their new businesses in Surrey. Also, the support for end-of-life care, ensuring residents can spend their last days with their loved ones at home. The continued support for people with challenging behaviour, mental health needs, learning disabilities and autism. Really ensuring that no one is left behind. Finally, I would like to commend you on your reability service. Free service for up to six weeks, helping residents discharge from hospital care. Ensuring they regain the skills and confidence needed for them to return home. I really do think this is a very exciting time to be part of Surrey County Council. And I really do congratulate you on this work and the integration that you've actually managed to.
Oh, I think we lost you at the end there, Alison, but uh I think deliver or something would have been the last word, but um. But thank you very much. Um I we're all very supportive of this, so um. Uh I think we'll go straight to the recommendation, the four recommendations which you you've touched on. Um so I won't read those out, they're on page three hundred and seventeen. Uh and I'll assume those are agreed unless anybody were to indicate to the contrary.
Agreed.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you, Sinead. Uh and we're still with you um on the next item, item twelve, on the route to market for two extra care schemes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, leader. So colleagues will recall that a paper was presented to Cabinet in July two thousand and nineteen. Setting our adult social care's accommodation with care and support strategy. For delivering extra care housing for older people and independent living schemes for adults with a learning disability and/or autism. So I'm very pleased to advise that this paper sets out Surrey County Council's proposed route to market. For two further sites proposed for extra care housing on Lakeside and Salisbury Road. This will support our strategy to deliver accommodation with care and support in line with the council's twenty thirty vision. Enabling people to access the right health and social care with appropriate housing. That empowers the most vulnerable residents to remain independent and achieve their potential, ensuring nobody is left behind. Key highlights of the paper are the substantial contribution these two sites will make towards the council's objective. To expand affordable extra care housing provision across the county. A very reliable approximate is that these sites will provide one hundred and thirty-six affordable extra care units. In total, this means if Cabinet were to approve plans to develop extra care housing. At the Lakeside and Salisbury Road sites, when combined with the planned developments already approved at Pond Meadow, Brockhurst and Pinehurst. We will be on target to deliver around forty-three percent of the council's ambition. So with this in mind, I would very much welcome my cabinet colleague's support for this report. As per the recommendations set out on pages three hundred and thirty-three and three hundred and thirty-four of this Agenda Pack. Thank you, leader.
Thank you very much, Sinead. Uh we'll start with Mel Fue.
Yeah, thank you. Um as Sinead says, this is the fourth and fifth of the sites that have been identified for extra care. Um I'm pleased to support this paper. I'm also satisfied that the paper addresses that in the absence of a design-build-and-operate option. The paper also includes the option for the council to undertake the development on its own. So with that, I'm more than happy to uh support. Thanks.
Uh thank you, Mel. Zoe Grandar.
Thank you. Thank you, chairman. Uh thank you, Sinead, for the paper. Uh I I read the paper with great interest and and three words jumped at me. One was independent, the other one was life, and the other one was home. I think eight extra care housing, as it is described here, and indeed is is an annex on the key principles that apply to it. Means that those with extra needs, such as uh are brought on by dementia or other cognitive impairments. Will be able to live independently, that is not in an institutional setting. But in a place where they will have onsite support, feel safe and accessible, have an amenable environment. And they will be able to call home. I think this is absolutely excellent. I found the paper comprehensive. It's not, it's not my area of expertise, but as I said, I read it with a a great interest. I find it very comprehensive and every step, at every step clearly, alternatives have been considered. Risks have been considered and the mitigations as well. As Sinead mentioned, the Cabinet has already signed up to the strategy for developing accommodation with care and support. And this paper also reminds us of our well-articulated ambition in that regard. And we will be looking for a strategic development and housing partner. And if not found, we will develop in-house. That shows we are resolute about implementing our strategy. I also found the same resolution on assertions such as a hundred percent affordable units by default. A hundred percent nomination rights for Surrey County Council residents. Uh uh in in need of support from the council, so that the units are available to those eligible for our support. There is also a promise to operate a waiting list to ensure appropriate nominations and care need mix. Again, this shows we are making provision to guard our residents' interests. To me, this is very powerful and really speaks to our commitment. Further, once the plans are approved, we will have put in place certainly plans. For forty-seven percent of the provision of of the seven hundred and twenty-five units. If we think that it will take us about three years for tenants to move in, we must make the decision now. This is a good pace and we must keep it up. I'm fully supported of the recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you, Zoe. Um I can't see uh any other speakers. I mean, we are, again, we are very keen to to see uh this initiative progressed as as quickly as possible. Both in relation to these sites and indeed any others that we can identify. Um but this is, you know, uh will be a very good start. Um there are uh five recommendations on uh pages three, three, three to three, three, four. Again, I'll assume unless I see anybody indicate the contrary that those are agreed. Thank you very much, Sinead. Um okay, item thirteen, back to Caterham. And so Caterham on the Hill and Old Cawston Flood alleviation scheme. Natalie Brownhall.
Thank you, leader. This scheme is part of the wider Surrey flood alleviation scheme. With Surrey County Council taking the lead on this multi-agent agency scheme to reduce flood risk. To two hundred and five properties in Caterham on the Hill and Old Cawston. Working alongside the community, Tandridge Borough and County councillors and the Flood Action Group in developing the schemes. Their helping gathering the necessary information needed to understand exactly what happens during the flooding. And communicating to the wider community has been invaluable. Approval of a maximum Surrey County Council contribution of fourteen thousand pounds. Will help unlock a potential one point nine five million scheme to better protect Surrey residents. Who have suffered repeated flooding issues. The majority of the funding will be provided by the Environment Agency Flood Defense Grant in aid. And the River Thames Regional Flood and Coastal Committee. The scheme will provide present value benefits of eleven point four million over the next twenty-five years. The scheme aims to protect properties on an individual basis through measures known as property flood resilience. Examples are flood-proof doors, non-return valves. And air brick covers that prevent floodwater from entering the home. The delivery of this will be through the Environment Agency Property Flood Resilience Framework. Wider catchment interventions, such as the use of rain gardens, swales and water butts. Will not only reduce the risk of flooding, but also provide wider benefits. Such as an increased biodiversity, improvements to air and water quality, a reduction in heat islands. And an improvement in mental health and wellbeing for those benefiting from these measures. Thank you.
Um thank you, Natalie. Um can I go to Chris Button again then as the as the divisional member?
Uh thank you very much indeed, leader. And I'll begin by saying that on this paper, I was very well consulted by Doug and by his colleague, Tall Peebles. Who uh took the trouble to give me a very detailed and lengthy briefing. And with whom I have worked very closely over the past four years since the traumatic events of June two thousand and sixteen. And their support for the Local Flood Action Group. Uh their work with the parish council and the concomitant. Uh intensive work to devise a cost-effective and appropriate flood prevention scheme, which is genuinely community-led. I think that this is an example, working with the Flood Action Group. Of uh of how communities' wisdom and intelligence can be used to provide. And to to promote sensible uh sensible measures to prevent. The impacts of climate change and, let's be honest, an inadequate drainage system overseen by Thames Water. And also some of the highways problems. I need to say that the events of June two thousand and sixteen were one of the defining events of my life. And had a very profound effect on me, but a much more profound effect on the victims of flooding. A number of them have, I know, suffered from post-traumatic stress disorder. And a number were out of their home for over a year. And a number continue to suffer the impacts. Not everybody was insured, not everybody now can get insurance. Though they've been significantly supported by the Flow Action Group and the National Flood Forum in securing those things. And I know that the proposals that are made in this paper will significantly improve the quality of life. And remove a degree of fear from those residents who've lived in fear of a repeated occurrence ever since that 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 traumatic day. The parish council has been heavily involved in supporting the Flood Action Group, including funding extra. Time for it for it to be supported by the National Flood Forum. And the parish council has also taken the opportunity to learn from. Uh where the inadequacies of the wet spots are on the roads and has paid for extra gully cleaning. Which has again allayed a number of residents' concerns about the flooding in in certain roads. There still remains work to be done. Uh some flood remediation work under a road in my division is about to be undertaken, for which I'm grateful to Mr Cunnor and his team. There are very considerable further works needed to be done in Banstead Road. There is the constant leaking of sewage into the highway every time it rains heavily. And we have a creaking infrastructure in respect of our foul water um drainage. Which is very hard to address systematically and uh and um and actually change. But I wanted to say that this paper represents a significant step forward, albeit it's taken four years, but I understand why that's the case. And again, I'd like to thank Tall Peebles and Doug for their. Support for the Local Flood Action Group and their support for the work with Icarus and the um Environment Agency. I know that the impact of the events of this pluvial flood at Caterham Hill has caused the Environment Agency to take up Caterham Hill as a case study. And I know we're being closely watched. I know we need to be continually vigilant. But I would say to the county council, what happened in Caterham Hill could happen elsewhere in Surrey, given the nature of the way in which our climate is changing. So I hope this learning will be supported. I will say one final thing, since I spoke earlier about the importance of supporting mental health. The trauma of a number of the victims of the flood still hasn't gone away. We at the parish council paid for a counselling programme to go into place for the victims of the floods in the subsequent months after the event. But there are still problems in terms of resilience. So after the event, it was very hard to know how many residents had been flooded, how to find them, how to engage with them. There still isn't the fleet-footed disaster recovery system in place, and I've been working with Tandridge District Council to try to learn those lessons, and I shall continue to work with county and district council officers to try to get those resilience schemes in place to ensure that in the case of any future events, residents can get support quickly, get comfort quickly, and if their mental health suffers, they can get the right support quickly. So please support this paper. I thank the officers and I thank the Cabinet for taking it, and I'm very grateful for the work that's been done. Thank you, Leader.
Thank you very much, Chris. I mean, I think we're putting in more than thirty million into schemes across Surrey, quite apart from what will be hundreds of millions partly funded by us, partly funded by the Environment Agency in relation to the River Thames flood alleviation scheme. We're all very conscious of the seven thousand and fourteen floods, and I appreciate that, you know, these things take longer than perhaps one would hope for. But the key thing is now, we are building up these schemes and we will move forward with them on an individual basis as soon as we can. Completely recognise your comments and the last bit of your speech there, and we will pick that up here as well as you are with Tandridge District Council. I don't think there are any other speakers. Again, this is a positive recommendation, positive paper. There are four recommendations on pages three, seven, seven to three, seven, eight. Can I again assume that those are agreed unless I see your hands in the country?
Agreed.
We've been going for two hours and we're on item thirteen. We have another eleven items or so to go, so I'm going to pause this meeting until five past four, so that's just under ten minutes, whilst people can just have a very short break. So perhaps if we could pause the recording and members can turn off their cameras, and then if you can be back by five past four, please. Fue.
Present.
Natalie Brownhall.
Present.
Zoe Grant-Duff.
Present.
Art Lutie.
Present.
Alison Griffiths.
Present.
Marista Heath.
Present.
Becky Rush.
Present.
And Edward Hawkins.
Present.
Good, thank you very much. I don't think we'll be another two hours, but I thought it was probably deserved, just a few minutes to stretch. So back to the agenda, we are on item fourteen, which is the county's resilience plan for the winter twenty twenty twenty-one. And over to Denise Turner-Stewart.
Thank you, Leader. So this report details the important and ongoing work of Surrey County Council on our services. It also demonstrates the agility of our resilience to support our organisation and plan resilience of our services and support our residents. It covers the resurgence of the Covid pandemic threat, the end of EU exit transition period, and seasonal health and non-health-related pressures, and it details the risks and threats to business continuity with an overview of work undertaken to test our business continuity, to mitigate risks and minimise disruption, and details the model used for our council to respond to incidents. Surrey County Council is a category one responder under the Civil Contingencies Act and contributes to multi-agency planning and response with category one and two responders. The multi-agency working is delivered through our local resilience forum, which incorporates our own services with police, health, borough and district, and BCFS and other partners, and the local resilience forum produces a community risk register. This report looks at the reasonable worst-case scenarios which were set out, as I mentioned, the Covid nineteen pandemic, seasonal winter health pressures, the end of the EU transition period and severe weather. And we've also had some references throughout this meeting to some of that severe weather which has impacted in the past. I would hope this report gives assurance and confidence around all of our structures, our important relationships and our processes in place to manage this period of which is potentially going to be a challenging winter period. The planning response to threats are set out, such as increased demand on services, staff shortages, disruption to supply chains and the ability to transport and travel, with mitigation such as support for the vulnerable, business engagement, a review of our supply chains. For example, we now have a six-week PPE buffer and traffic management. And we've also looked at staff capacity, both business as usual and with increased workload, with measures such as redeployment, flu vaccination and other resilience measures. And with regard to the EU exit, we're looking at services and suppliers, adult social care continuing to support the vulnerable through our excellent services that have had plenty of exposure today. So this is, as I say, this is a confidence-giving report. It really demonstrates the capabilities within Surrey County Council and our excellent partners, and I hope that you'll recognise the work that's been undertaken for resilience planning for the winter period. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Denise. Matt Furness.
Thank you, Leader. Yes, no, I just wanted to hugely support this item, particularly around sort of highways and transport. Item sort of twelve, paragraph twelve, as we got into the EU transition period, we are doing a lot of work to make sure that we've done all the planning of the scenarios around freight and traffic that could be affected in the east of the county. And as members are aware, you're starting to get your daily updates now around our winter contingency. We've got our twelve new gritters already, and all the primary school children are being asked to suggest names for them. So we are sort of well-stocked with salt and grit, and we're ready for, hopefully, it will be a milder winter, but we're ready for what's ahead of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Sinead Mooney.
Thank you, Leader. Thinking in my capacity as Lead Member for Adult Social Care and Public Health and Chair of the Local Outbreak and Engagement Board, I'm very much in support of this paper. It's clear to me that a lot of work has gone into planning our resilience during the winter period. And there is no doubt that we're going to have many challenges ahead of us, but I feel we are prepared for some of those key challenges. Key areas that I'm focusing on in terms of being Lead Member are the service protection and staffing resilience and the supply chain resilience as well, particularly with PPE in mind. And I've noted that in paragraph thirty-one of the paper, the LRF has procured a six-week buffer supply of PPE. This really is reassuring news for our frontline staff, carers and our providers. And I'd really like to thank councillor Turner-Stewart, the LRF and Katie Stewart and her team for the amazing piece of work that they've done to get us in this position. Thank you.
We'd all endorse that, absolutely. Julie Isles.
Just before I speak to the local resilience forum aspects, I do have a suggestion for a name for one of Matt's new fleet of trucks from one of our primary schools, Salty McSalty, perhaps. But it's been a long meeting, so the local resilience forum has at its heart a partnership approach. It provides an excellent citizens-focused way of working. And through this coordination, we have very quickly responded to the gap where children in receipt of free school meals may not receive that provision during school holidays. Now, of course, some schools have already stepped in for that provision, but the national voucher scheme ran only until this half-term. So with our local resilience forum, we've identified very quickly those requiring assistance and working with the districts and boroughs across the county, we'll be establishing a long-term plan to ensure that food is either available through food banks or through other local arrangements. And there are many different setups across the community, voluntary and faith sectors in each of our constituencies. And I think we also need to remember that with job losses and other fallout from Covid, the targeting of help to those who are in need isn't just about free school meals, because of course some of the people most recently affected may not have applied for those school lunches. So it is much better to have communities effectively supporting each other through the right mechanisms where there's no stigma attached to it.
Thank you, Julie, and if anybody does need any support, please look on the website for the contact details, the helpline, or indeed, if you know of anybody, please ring that number and the team will then take that forward with the local area. Denise, thank you very much for your report. That's a comprehensive plan there for the winter. Thank you. So we will, I'm just, there's one recommendation, which is to note the work with partners to ensure business continuity. So that we will do, and indeed with our thanks to you and to also to the local resilience forum for all the work that they continue to do to support residents through Covid nineteen. I assume that recommendation is agreed. Thank you.
Agreed.
Okay, so we'll now move on to item fifteen, which is the annual report from Surrey Safeguarding in relation to adults. Sinead.
Thank you, Leader. Cabinet colleagues will be aware that the Surrey Safeguarding Adults Board is a statutory multi-agency board with responsibilities set out in the CARE Act two thousand and fourteen. Having briefly introduced the previous annual report last year, I commend the board for their work on the improved formatting and presentation of data from key partners. It certainly has been a busy year for the board, which has been dominated in the final months by Covid nineteen and its impact. The report highlights the responsiveness of agencies in Surrey in terms of keeping safeguarding adults at the forefront of all that we do. With this in mind, I'd like to have you interpret independent chair of the Surrey Safeguarding Adults Board, who will present the report. Thank you, Simon. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Sinead. Sinead, thank you, Chair. I'll just put one quick caveat. I lost my internet about fifteen minutes ago. It is come back, so if I disappear, I apologise profusely. I hope everybody likes the news format of the report. I can't take much credit for that. That was done by our board manager and our board admin, but I think it's made life much easier for people to understand and read. As we're looking at what we've done, obviously, one of the big things that we've been affected by in the last month, last year, but more effectively this year, has been Covid. And although I won't dwell on it too long, it has had some real major impacts on people that are vulnerable and have care and support needs. But it also has had a real positive effect, I think, in that all our services have really joined together and worked much harder to make sure that we're all keeping safeguarding at the forefront of everybody's mind. The past year has seen referrals increases and on section forty-two's, which actually I see as a real positive step. It means we're getting better awareness and also means that people are recognising what's going on. Of course, it also highlights that there's more vulnerability out there, and I think, again, Covid will emphasise that more and more. There's been an increase through most of the areas, but one of the areas that we're seeing a lot around is domestic abuse, which continues to increase and show up there. We're also seeing an improvement in quality on our section forty-two's, which is the intermediary before we go to safeguarding reports, SARS, and therefore we're seeing this work through and it's starting to see better information, better feedback there, but there is still some way to go. There's a lot in the report. I'm assuming everybody's read it, so I don't really need to make too much time and take up your time on what is a very busy meeting. I just make one plea that at the end, week sixteen to the twenty-second November is National Safeguarding Week, and I commend everybody to try and get involved. The website has started to put up things around that, and we will be supporting it fully. Both myself and Sinead will be doing, I think, introduction videos and things like that. But we have a series of agendas which helps us to highlight that safeguarding is everybody's business. So thank you. I'm quite happy to take questions.
Thank you very much, Simon. Yes, we'll start with Mary Lewis.
Thank you very much, Chair. Good afternoon, Simon. And I wanted to say thank you for your report. And as Lead Member for Children, I was very encouraged to see that you mentioned early on in it that improved working with the Children's Safeguarding Partnership has been a feature of the year, the executive and the partnership, and long may that remain so. But my specific question or my request is that you can build into everything you do with various practitioners in health and adult social care and elsewhere across the partnership, that everywhere they go into people's homes and families, that they think child as well, because most of the safeguarding issues that are coming up with adults would have an impact on a child. A child as a carer or a child that's in the house witnessing domestic abuse. Can you assure us that these considerations are being given prominence within the work of the adult safeguarding world? Thank you.
Thank you for the question. Of course, it is always important that we recognise where there's vulnerabilities, even if they don't come under a remit, and there is a different remit, obviously, for children and adults. And I'd also say the same is true of children's, that if they see something there that we would recognise a vulnerability from an adult, we do that. We are very keen to make sure we work together, and there are some initiatives coming up. I have to say Covid has disturbed some of the opportunities. We've had to try and work those through fully, but we are constantly looking at that. A family is a family. It's made up of adults and children, and therefore both those vulnerabilities need to be seen and there. We just need to make sure that we're communicating across children's and adult services and health and police and everywhere else that this is important, that we recognise where those vulnerabilities are and we deal with them. And, you know, it's about making sure that we look at the risks, we manage the risks, and we work together to paint those risks down.
And Simon, I'm assuming that you'll also present the report to the Health and Wellbeing Board at the next meeting also?
Yes, it goes in, I think, December meeting. Yeah, we're there and presenting it there, so we're making the same pleas around.
Exactly. So they're a good opportunity to do that. And obviously, you've got a close working relationship with Simon Hart, his Chair of the Children's Safeguarding Board.
Yep.
Excellent. Sinead, did you want to add anything further?
Thank you, Leader. I think Simon has covered it perfectly, really, and I very much look forward to participating in the videos and continuing to raise a profile of the importance of safeguarding. Thank you.
Thank you. So Simon, thank you very much indeed for all your work and for the team in producing the report and, of course, all the work that you do throughout the year. So there are some important messages here that we need to make sure that get through to residents and organisations, so the more that your report can be distributed across the county, then the better. But thank you very much for all that you're doing.
Thank you, Chair.
There is one recommendation, which is to consider and to note the annual report. I take that as agreed. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Item sixteen then is the Surrey Waste Local Plan Adoption. Natalie.
Thank you, Leader. This review of the County Council's waste plan commenced in twenty sixteen, and is now nearing the end of the process.
and is now nearing the end of the process, following an examination in public in September two thousand and nineteen. The independent planning inspector found the plan sound. Waste planning is rarely popular and brings out strong emotions. Certain communities are going to be unhappy about the contents of the plan. However, the County Council has a statutory requirement to produce local plans for minerals and waste in order to ensure that there is sufficient capacity to review and update them as necessary every five years. The Surrey Waste Plan is twelve years old and is out of date. If we did not adopt a new plan, the council would find it increasingly difficult to defend planning decisions and enforcement action taken on the basis of the policies in the existing plan, potentially resulting in unwanted speculative waste development and the regularization of unwanted and unauthorized waste activity. The new Waste Local Plan has fewer allocated sites than the existing plan. Some have been removed completely. And to clarify the position on two contentious sites, Trump's farm is now under the new plan specifically and solely intended to facilitate the development of a household waste materials dry recovery facility, not a gasifier. Waylands, in this case, the inspector accepted the concerns expressed by both borough and county councillors, but she still considered that the site should be included. She stated that the routes of Ryden's Road and Walton Park should be avoided for access to the potential site. However, Surrey County Council have added additional wording to give added safeguards to the local residents. The routing of HGVs to access the proposed site will need to be controlled to avoid these unsuitable routes. The onus will be on any developer to propose and suitably address these measures. And if they are unable to do this, it is unlikely that planning permission will be granted. This position is an improvement to the existing Surrey Waste Plan, which does not provide any such restriction. There are twenty-two industrial land areas of search identified in the council, in the county, comprising three hundred and fifty hectares. We only need approximately six hectares for waste-related development. These areas will be thoroughly investigated first, prior to looking at any of the greenbelt sites identified. Further, the identification of sites does not mean that development will come forward or will be permitted in these locations. When work commenced on this plan, the intention was that it would remain in place until two thousand and thirty-three. During its evolution, however, the approach has changed from one of separate waste and minerals to a joint approach. The intention is to now move very quickly to produce a joint waste and minerals plan, taking account of our climate strategy and any recently adopted borough and district local plans. There will therefore be a program reported to Cabinet this November. And we expect to move quickly to consultation next summer, two thousand and twenty-one. In the meantime, I would like Cabinet to formally recommend that council adopts the Waste Local Plan set out in annexes two and three to the report at its forthcoming meeting on the eighth of December. Thank you, Leader.
Thank you very much, Natalie. Mel, few.
Thank you, Leader. I'd like to thank the cabinet member for her assurances. As with all the activity that's taking place within a small section within my division, such as two and a half thousand homes, a private waste incinerator application, and last week, an invitation to attend a public examination of a gravel extraction. I welcome the assurance that the Waste and Minerals Plan refresh will take place and consolidate the two plans. I'm also hopeful that a fresh look will take place on all the appropriate site selections, as Natalie has described, especially in view of all the developments that have and will be completing in the intervening years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mel.
Thank you, councillor Few. It's not appropriate to comment on a live application or pre-application, as you know. However, as I've just mentioned, the program for the combined Surrey Waste and Minerals Local Plan will be coming to November's Cabinet. This review will give the county the opportunity to reassess the quantum of mineral required and whether the allocated sites are still appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Natalie. Okay, well, we've obviously had an opportunity to consider this in considerable detail previously. And it's an important document, you know, and there's further work to be done. So there are three recommendations at pages four eight eight, four nine six of the pack, which, and I'll just note those, which is to note the report of the inspector to recommend to the council the adoption of the local, the Surrey Waste Local Plan as set out in annexes two and three, and to approve the publication alongside the adopted Surrey Waste Local Plan, the required post-adoption environmental statement, which is set out in annex four. Again, I'll assume that's agreed unless I see any hands to the contrary. Thank you very much. Moving on then, item seventeen is the street lighting refinancing of the contract. Matt Furness.
Thank you, Leader. Yes, a very exciting topic. We have discussed the LED before that and that switchover is currently happening. So what we do is we do test to see whether it is worth refinancing the PFI contracts that we currently have a number of times since its signing in March two thousand and ten, when we commenced the contract with Surrey Lighting Services. The scope of the contract included the operation and maintenance of the street lighting equipment for twenty-five year period and also the replacement of seventy thousand approximately street lighting columns and eighty-nine thousand lanterns, as well as a central management system to be installed. What we've been doing despite Covid is we've been running through and it turns out that actually the council has requested the service provider to carry out the initial analysis to see if there was any gain in refinancing the project debt. And earlier this year, we did that request again for the refinancing. The service provider did a desktop assessment and indicated there was significant net gain from refinancing. And the council would receive a substantial return through its share as well. So after this, we have engaged informally with potential lenders to understand their appetite. This reinforced the initial findings and we agreed to formally commence refinancing. As we were in the process, as I mentioned, about negotiating agreeing contracts with the conversion of streetlights to LED, we delayed this formal commencement until we have signed that, which I am pleased to say that is now complete, which means we can now progress with the refinancing initiative now. Whilst I believe most of the detail, because this is commercially sensitive, is in part two, we will determine that there will be no more than ten percent value difference in the council's share of refinancing gain. And if the threshold fell below this, we would bring it back to Cabinet for review. So Leader, I'm very happy to put this forward. We are getting best value for the taxpayer here. And hopefully, through this process, we'll see the council receiving a significant gain. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Matt. Are there any questions on that or people happy that's self-explanatory? Yeah, I'd say no hands up. There are two recommendations to approve the mechanism and to then give delegated authority to the executive director and the cabinet member to finalize the details. I assume that's agreed.
Agreed.
Thank you very much. Item eighteen then is is a short paper on the Surrey Economic Strategy, the two thousand and thirty strategy. And it's a bit of an update and a bit of a taster really of what you can expect at the cabinet meeting in December, when the full strategy will be put will be put to you for comment and approval. I mean, it's just worth just picking up on a couple of points though from this report. So we did set up in two thousand and nineteen, which does seem quite a long time ago now, I have to say, an economic commission, which was comprised of a number of business, people within business that had a real interest in the Surrey economy and chaired by Lord Hammond, with a view really to looking at ways in which we could continue to grow the Surrey economy. As the single largest contributor to the Exchequer outside of London, you know, and a real economic powerhouse, we were really looking at ways in which we could, I'm afraid to use that phrase, level up the county. We have a much stronger economy in the West than we do in the East. So that was really what the focus was and building on some work that we had done by ours. And of course, Covid has completely changed that. But there are still, as the paper recognizes, other significant factors that we need to be cognizant of, not least of all the exit from the European Union at the end of this year. The whole climate change agenda, which we touched on in other parts of this agenda, and of course, the impact of now digitization and automation and actually the ways of working for many people. So we need to look at what has happened over these last few months and try and predict what will happen over the coming months and years. I think it's just worth, while looking at paragraph three of the report, just to demonstrate that this is about pulling together all of the strands and streams of work that are already in train. And in particular, the Surrey Infrastructure Plan, the economy, our economy here in Surrey is undoubtedly in part dependent upon ease of transport. You know, congestion, as we've mentioned before, is a significant factor and a detraction for businesses if they can't get around the county easily. The Economic Commission made a number of recommendations. The Thinking Place narrative, which will be bringing to a future Cabinet's meeting is really about the Surrey identity and what people think about Surrey and indeed how we can enhance what is, you know, a fantastic county, both in terms of innovating our future economy. We have some fantastic organizations here. We have a long history, whether that's in aviation, in motor, you know, the first mass cycle ride even. And we have organizations like McLaren here and so on. So how can we innovate our future economy? And how can we make the most of our green spaces and our countryside? And one of the other small positives, I suppose, from Covid has been that, you know, a number of residents have discovered the countryside, you know, near to where they live, which perhaps they didn't have the opportunity to enjoy. So we need to capitalize on that. We need to seek inward investments. You know, we will be pushing this government for a growth deal. There is no reason why this county shouldn't benefit from a growth deal. So we need to look at, you know, as part of our strategic economic leadership, we need a countywide approach. We need to, whether it's investment for tourism, to increase tourism, or to just to make this a better, more, you know, a better, more attractive place for businesses to come and to stay. So that is what our economic strategy will start to look at. We will look at, you know, the disparities across the county. All of these themes all come together, whether it's around health inequalities or economic inequalities and so on. So, you know, the paper that I mentioned, the beginning of the meeting, the organization reset pulls all of that together in the four strategic priorities and the ways in which we will deliver those. But this is about local growth. It is about local jobs. It is about building on the real specialisms that we have in this county and creating a healthy population insofar as we're able to do that. And my last point is really about, again, tying this in with the whole the whole piece of work around local engagement with communities, local empowerment. This is about a hyper-local economy. What can we do with our communities and our businesses to support them in their own locality? And that's, at some level, is going to be about offering retraining and reskilling for individuals where those jobs sadly have gone or have gone for the foreseeable future. So it'll be a really good piece of work, I think, when we finish the strategy. And we'll have an opportunity to go through that in more detail over the next few weeks and then it will come back to Cabinet for sign off. But, you know, again, this is a piece of work that involves many partners and many views. So I hope it will be, I'm sure it will be a very comprehensive and really useful piece of work. The I'm not, there are no hands up and I'm not going to invite any comments, bearing in mind the length of the meeting already. But only because there'll be an opportunity to discuss this in much more detail at the December meeting. But the recommendation is to note the progress that's being made on the development of that strategy and also to note that you will be seeing that again in December. So I will assume that is agreed. Thank you. Moving on then to item nineteen, the Broadwater Secondary School. Julie, ours.
Yes, I'll keep it brief. This is a very good paper. It's a very good business case for the expansion of Broadwater School. We're taking it from a four-form entry per year to a five-form entry of all those year groups. So from a total of six hundred pupils to seven hundred and fifty. It will help meet the demand for a hundred and fifty additional secondary places in Waverley from September two thousand and twenty-one. I can assure you that the divisional member has been consulted. It's councillor Penny Rivers. She has a very positive appreciation of this. And her view is that it can only be to the benefit of this community. So we have a statutory obligation to provide sufficient school places. And cabinet members will be aware of the recent bulge in primary school pupils. And that, of course, affects the transition of similar increase through to secondary. Broadwater School was rated good at its last Ofsted inspection in two thousand and nineteen and it's consistently offered over school places to accommodate local children. Our offices are confident in the school's ability to manage the increase in pupil numbers. And project costing will be covered in part two of our agenda. But the decision will be closely aligned to the school with the DFE guidelines for buildings. We have had forty-four responses to the consultation with five disagreeing. But some of those comments referred to the school being undersubscribed. And I feel I've already addressed that in previous remarks about the school offering over pupil admission numbers. It is funded from the School Basic Need Programme. There are no proposals to amend the admissions criteria. So I'm seeking approval for the business case and subject to approval of the detailed financial information that we proceed to complete tenders and subsequent contract award. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Any comments on that? Are we happy with the recommendation? Recommendation is to subject to approval of detailed financial information, that we approve the business case for the expansion of Broadwater School, creating additional one hundred and fifty school places. Is that agreed? Very much. Thank you, Julie. Okay, item twenty then, an update on the Prudential Ride London Surrey. Denise, then, Stuart.
Thank you, Leader. So this report details the Prudential Ride London Surrey event, which is an Olympic legacy event, which has taken place since two thousand and thirteen, with a hundred mile route based on the Olympic route, the original Olympic route. So this event does require road closures, which take place in Elmbridge, Woking, Guildford and Mul Valley. For two thousand and twenty-one, the organizers have requested and are planning for a shorter route through Surrey, which only comes in Surrey for four miles. This event is focused on a women and family event and you've agreed to support that as our leader. So we undertook a consultation regarding the future of the event for the next five years beyond two thousand and twenty-one and that consultation. and that consultation closed in February of this year. And during that consultation, there was a very marginal majority of Surrey residents in favor, fifty three percent. Following that consultation, very lengthy discussions took place over many months and tremendous efforts were taken on the part of you, our leader, and Cabinet members and directors to come up with a real tangible return for the use of Surrey's roads with our approach being that we wanted to give back to Surrey residents and have a justifiable mitigation for the disruption to residents and businesses. And we've all received correspondences over the years since the event has been taking place. So financial contribution was sought for a cycle scheme for all Surrey pupils so that they could be proficient in cycling by the end of their primary school years. Unfortunately, this was not successful despite very determined, as I say, and concerted efforts. Historically, London Marathon charitable trusts have awarded grants in excess of four million pounds over seven years. But unfortunately, due to COVID, they're not accepting grant applications now with grant funding unavailable for the foreseeable future. And with the absence of financial surplus, they have difficulty in providing that grant funding. So we in Surrey will be focusing on smaller, less disruptive events with directly benefiting charities and organizations in Surrey to enable participation from all ages and backgrounds and align with our twenty thirty community vision. So with consideration of the benefits and the negative impacts set out, the impact on Surrey residents and the absence of a better deal, uncertainty around the future funding and with our focus on local events benefiting local charities directly in Surrey, the recommendation is not to continue with Prudential Ride London Surrey after twenty twenty one. But we will continue to consider events and we will continue to work with Active Surrey and with our active travel proposals and promote safe, inclusive and accessible cycling in Surrey. Thank you. I would like to say actually thank you to all who have participated over the years as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. Right, we've got a few speakers, so we'll go to Julie Isles first.
Thank you, Denise and Tim. I wanted to speak on this because it does affect my division and I've thought long and hard about it and I've actually canvassed opinion across the parish councils and across residents. They are ambivalent about this in the true sense of the word, that there are strong opinions on either side of the position. And I haven't just listened to the loud voices who are against it. I have cyclist friends who tell me that it won't make any difference not continuing with this race, that people will still come into the area because they want to cycle the iconic route. And there are limited options from the A three to be able to access that and I appreciate those concerns. But it's about the on-the-day disruption versus the ongoing disruption of cycling pelotons that cross our roads every day and particularly at the weekends. So it's not just about it being one day per year. I think the overall view is that people in this division who are affected by that one day per year, but more importantly by the behavior of cyclists in massive groups throughout the year feel that they have had their fair share of hosting this event and that it is possibly somebody else's turn to do so. I welcome the fact that we will still be committed to active participation in sport and even more so that we will make that for different groups of people. And a perfect example of one coming forward in my division is to tie it in with the Shear Hill climb, which is a parade of vintage motors at the Shear Hill once a year. They have a family fun day associated with that. So I have a local resident with a sporting background who is prepared to take the work on for this and host a family cycle event at the same time. And the proceeds from those activities will go to Cherry Trees, which is a very good respite centre for children in this division. So that speaks to the local aspects and something that surely residents can get far more supportive and behind.
Yeah, thank you, Julie. Matt?
Thank you, Leader. Yes, it was very disappointing, as Denise said, that the London organizers were not willing to help us with funding bikeability. We've had the conversation earlier when it was raised as a question because we do have this commitment to provide that training to all students in Surrey. So, I mean, for me, that was extremely disappointing. I mean, we have made the decision that we're going to do it ourselves and we're doing it well despite the circumstances presented by COVID. And we are continuing to improve cycle facilities across the county by introducing LSWIPs in each district and borough, which will happen over the next couple of years. These are local cycling and walking infrastructure plans. Woking has the first one in place and we're committed to putting walking and cycling improvements in across Surrey. As I say, I do think the event is a very good one, but it is disappointing that a little bit more direct spend into Surrey has not been forthcoming. So I'm happy to support this decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. You know, I have declared a personal interest in this before. I have ridden it three times, clearly last year. It is a great event and it's a great showcase for the county. But on the other hand, there has to be some recognition of the disruption that it causes to our residents and fifty three percent in favor, you know, shows just how balanced that view is. I think probably, you know, that maybe if those numbers are broken down, it may well be that those that are more in favor of it or those that are less affected. But it is a great shame. You know, Denise Timm Stewart has tried enormously hard here personally to achieve some recognition of that disruption in terms of support for the bikeability scheme or for the ability for this authority to have some say in how any charitable funds are distributed, either through Community Foundation for Surrey or in some other way. You know, obviously this year it was cancelled and next year isn't going to happen in the same way. So we would only be talking about restarting in twenty twenty two, the earliest. We've made it very clear to the organizers that we're very open to further conversations, but any further conversation has to be on the basis that we can demonstrate, clearly demonstrate to residents that there is some, quite frankly, financial benefits to them. So with great sadness, I'm afraid, I do support the recommendation that we don't host the Ride London Surrey event beyond twenty twenty one. Those are the recommendations as per page seven, sorry, seven, five, seven in the papers. And I would ask you to confirm your agreement to those recommendations.
Agreed.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we'll move to the last item in the public part of this meeting, which is an update on our financial position. Mel, you.
Yeah, thank you. Dealing with the income firstly, at month five, which is the year to date to August, the forecast for the year shows a slight improvement from period four. The latest forecast is for a budget deficit for the year of nine million pounds. At this stage of the year, it's extremely difficult to forecast where the year will end, especially with the increasing demand on children's services mainly driven through COVID. The main drivers for the forecast deficit at this point of the year are about twelve point one million through continuing pressures being experienced in children's services through demand in corporate parenting and send caseloads. There's also a three point one million variance in waste, which is caused through increased volumes combined with a lower realization in recovery prices. These variances have been offset through four point seven million of increased grant income received and more favorable outlooks for the year by adult social care and central income and expenditure. I must reiterate that work is currently being undertaken to pursue every opportunity to ensure that the year ends in a balanced budget with no use of reserves. The full details of individual service results are set out in table one and more fully in annex one. The Cabinet is also asked to note in paragraphs five through eight the establishment of an early years recovery fund to support early years providers during this unsettling period. Turning to COVID, the current status set out in paragraph three to four, a summary at this point of the year shows that the county is currently facing a deficit of five point seven million as at the end of period five. We are however expecting reimbursement of four point six million for lost income, which we've claimed being directly lost as a result of COVID nineteen, which will reduce the deficit as described above. However, as mentioned earlier, forecasting the country, the county's exposure to COVID at this point, especially in the emergence of phase two, will be extremely difficult. In capital expenditure, table four sets out in full detail. The budget and forecast of expenditure for the year has been increased to account for the recent purchase of the property in Woodhatch in Rye Gate, which is planned to be used for the new corporate heart and other service needs and the accelerated spend of highways amounting to six million. Before I turn to the recommendations, I would like to publicly congratulate Lee Whitehouse, who was nominated and won the SIPFA Finance Leader of the Year Award and our highly effective finance team, who awarded the category as, quote, highly commended, unquote. I'm sure that the Cabinet members will join me in extending our appreciation and bringing recognition of the hard work and dedication as the service has moved through a very difficult transformation process. Now, turning to the recommendations, there are three recommendations. One to note the forecast of revenue and capital, to approve the establishment of an early years recovery as mentioned above, and to approve the reset of the capital budget, including the accelerated delivery of six million by highways. Thank you.
Thank you, Mel. Can I add to what your congratulations to Lee and to the team? You know, there is no doubt that the improvement to the finances and the way that we're reporting our figures, you know, is undoubtedly due to his leadership. And you have a very good, strong team around you, but you definitely led us through some difficult decisions over these last two years to get us to a point where, you know, we have, I believe, as a council, you know, survived well financially through the COVID period and that's through your sort of attention to detail and the decisions that we've taken in the past. So many congratulations. Right, Julie Isles next.
Yes, to reiterate the thanks to Lee and to all the finance colleagues who work particularly well with us at unpicking some of the complexities of these numbers and I truly do appreciate their sterling efforts on that side of things. I did just want to speak to the part at recommendation two about establishing the early years recovery fund. We do get early years funding from the Direct Schools Grant, but this establishment of this fund is a direct response to COVID nineteen, so it will be paid for through the COVID grant. Early years providers are absolutely essential to our place planning for entitled two and three-year-olds and those providers make up the shortfall in funding from private placements. Because of the timing of the lockdown closures, those places weren't taken up and also because of the timing throughout the year when nursery age children start school, which tends to be back-end loaded, the income phasing wasn't available to those settings. So this is an essential establishment and our team have done a really good job of working with the settings to identify them, to monitor and to support them staying open. So much so that they're asked to share their findings with a parliamentary committee, looking at the first thousand days because this is an area of national importance. So I just wanted to draw that to the attention and also to thank the offices for their very good work on this front.
Thank you, Julie. May Lewis?
Thank you. I just wanted to comment on this additional cost for children's services coming forward because I think it gives an example of the various different costs of COVID, which again, in adults, it was all apparent very quickly where the costs, the extra costs were going to be. But this is gradually coming forward bit by bit in children, the different impacts that they've been and how this is going to have a budgetary implication. So I was just going to highlight that to colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other speakers? If not, then as Mel says, there are three recommendations as per the paper. I'll take it that those are agreed. Thank you very much. That brings us to the end of the public meeting. I apologize for the length of the Cabinet meeting. It's been just under three hours. But the decisions that we've taken today, I hope, kind of reassures residents that even despite COVID nineteen, you know, we remain absolutely focused on delivering some extremely worthwhile projects that you heard about. We have a clear strategy as a county council. We have clear plans for delivering that strategy and indeed, as I've said, an absolute focus on doing the best for our residents. So thank you very much for those of you that have joined the meeting and look forward to catching up with you at the next Cabinet or council meeting. At that point, I will close the public meeting. Thank you very much.